Jess here. Jezlyn, are you here? Jester Scott. There's Jess.
Hi there.
Scott, are you there yet? All right, I don't see him. We'll go ahead and get started. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first item is to approve the agenda. We need to make a quick revision on before we approve it. It's item seven A on the consent agenda. We need to remove the second teacher on there. We'll approve the other two, but that that one item she's asked to have that removed. So we'll take off the second teacher on that. Certificated person. It's on page forty-six, I believe.
All right.
All right. So I'll make that change. Just need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
I will second it.
Motion by Peggy and second by Andy to approve the revised agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Sean or whoever's helping us with tech stuff, could you put up the Zoom protocol?
I am here tonight, Scotty. However, Deidra is our host tonight. She's going to do that for us.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Our protocols for Zoom meetings for the school board are that would ask that all those that are in attendance put their microphones on mute throughout the meeting unless you're called on specifically to talk. If you have a comment, we don't use the chat feature here in Zoom and we don't take comments through that feature during the meeting. And also, we don't take public comments during the meeting by voice either. If you do have comments for the board, send them to the district office to Deidra Holmberg at ProsserSchools.org. And those will get onto the board or onto the administration for action. Thank you. You can take that down. All right. Mr. Coleman, have you joined us yet? All right, I don't see him there. We'll move on to our next item is the election of officers. We do this at our first meeting every December. Our two positions that we'll be electing for tonight are the president and vice president positions. If you could, the board members that are on, go ahead, turn on your microphones and your cameras so we can see how we're doing here. We'll start with the position for president. And I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of president, please.
Scotty, this is Peggy. Say that again.
Andy, I heard I heard you start. Peggy, you go ahead and finish.
Okay, I well, I didn't hear what he'd said, but I was hoping that he had said to nominate Scotty Hunt for another year as president.
Hey.
I did.
Are there any? Okay, are there any other nominations for the position of president? All right, hearing none, we'll close the nominations and we'll vote. Scotty Hunt has been nominated for the position of president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'd like to add a comment. I'd like to add a comment. I just I just want to say that consistency through this last nine months has been really important for the work of the board and the work of the district. And Scotty, you've done a great job of leading us forward through this. So thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next position is the position of vice president. So I'll open the floor for nominations for vice president, please.
I'd like to nominate Jezlyn. Currently been serving as the vice president.
All right. Are there any other nominations for the position of vice president? All right, we'll close the nominations then. We'll move on to voting. Jennifer's been nominated for the position of vice president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The motions for both of those pasts. Deidra, thank you. We'll move on now to our director reports. These are going to start off with our assistant superintendent's reports and then continue on down through each of the director departments. We're going to try to limit those because we're going to get through all of our all of our directors and all of the principals tonight. We're going to try to limit those to five minutes each. The board has had the presentations in the written format, their reports to look at for a few days. So if there is something that we need to discuss further in those reports, we'll ask question then clarify. But if those presenting could limit their presentation to five minutes, that'll help us get through everybody tonight then. We'll start off with the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Deanna.
Good evening. I just have a few things tonight. We've been working on math professional development with K5 with Womacozai and myself and and the teachers and the coaches. That's going really well. We're trying to help helping teachers think of different ways to present word problems and different ways to make kids thinking more flexible. So they see more than just one way to solve problems because not all kids can see things the same way. The dyslexia advisory council, we have a meeting on Tuesday. We will be it starts at six o'clock. We'll be reviewing about three assessments from the OSPI approved assessment list that evening. And then if you board board members, if you checked your email today, Tammy sent you all of the school improvement plans in email. We'll be doing that presentation in two weeks. But we sent all those to you electronically today so that you could review those ahead of time. And that's all for me.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board for Deanna? All right, thank you, Deanna. We'll move on to the assistant superintendent for business and operations, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you've received at the end of last week, the annual financial report for the nineteen twenty school year. It's quite an extensive document. And obviously, I don't have time to go through all of that. Let me just highlight a few things. The good news is that our enrollment, we were nineteen students above what we budgeted. So that equated to a little extra dollars. We started the school year with three point seven million in our fund balance, which is basically our savings account. Our expenditures exceeded our revenues by two hundred and fifty-two thousand. So we ended up the year at three point five million. And that's a little bit over nine percent. That number divided by our expenditures for the year is a little bit over nine percent of the fund balance. So so that's that's really good news. We had we had budgeted to spend a lot more dollars. And I think COVID and some other things that we've been really trying to save dollars really helped us. There's there's a lot of information in there. There's graphs and so forth. The the big item is is the the budget status report. The graphs and stuff behind that really break down where those numbers come from, property taxes, interest, apportionment and those kind of things. So so that's really good news for the general fund. The other four funds are also included in there. Capital projects, of course, we're we're spending a lot of dollars on on the the capital projects. I've included the breakdown for the four buildings now that they're actually working on, the high school, Witstrand Heights and Riverview. Of course, majority of the elementary schools dollars are going to be spent on Heights and Keene Riverview right now first, and then Witstrand will be following that. So our fund balance, of course, is going to keep going down because we're expending the dollars. We're projecting this current year to get a lot of state dollars for the new high school. And I think that the high school's on on target. So so we're excited about that. As far as the debt service fund, that is just the fund that's used to pay our debt obligations. The the big general obligation bond. And then we have had some what are called limited general obligation bonds to buy buses and to buy the vehicles that we did a couple of years ago. So money comes in from the patrons for the big bond. And then we transfer dollars from the transportation vehicle fund to pay for those limited obligation bonds for the buses. The ASP fund, I did want to actually give you a spreadsheet showing the difference between the budgeted and the actual amounts by building and also by classification. So that that is also in there. And then the last fund is the transportation vehicle fund that is used to purchase buses. And you can see we have about ninety-seven thousand at the end of the year still in that fund. The state pays us depreciation on the buses. And it only can be used for that. So overall, it's I feel it was a very good year, even though we've had our challenges, certainly with COVID. But there have been some revenues that we have exceeded what our what our budget was and all that information is in there. So I did want to say if there are some questions, I could try and answer those or if there's not enough time, Mr. Hunt, I can try to respond to those in writing if if the board has questions.
Let's let's do that, Craig, unless the board has a specific item they want to address right now. If you do have questions regarding the end of year financials, send those to Craig and we'll get those answers back to all the board members.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Craig. So we'll move on to our next report, which is athletics and activities, Mr. Lusk.
Hi there, guys. Highlight a couple of things regarding connections with kids at the middle school and the high school. The ASBs are underway. All those positions have been secured. Club activity is up a little bit at the high school especially. And we're continuing trying to find ways to connect with kids and and celebrate some things and and continue their connections and good fortunes. Relative to athletics, middle school league meeting still on hold as far as middle school athletics until December or excuse me, January first. That's been the kind of consistent piece for the middle schools, unfortunately. Relative to the high school, we did begin to return to play as of yesterday. We have in our system about three hundred and eighty-six kids who have completed their family ID and information of those. We had about a hundred and forty yesterday that were all approved and participated and maybe one fifty or so today. There's a couple of sports that aren't able to really take advantage of that at this moment. Swim, golf, tennis, wrestling would be a couple. But the others are trying to make the best out of what they can do being outside and and taking care of all of the safety precautions of masking and physical distancing and sanitation. And to be able to participate outside in some fashion. Again, most of the work is their fitness development with some skill building. You can swing bats and and you know, defensive slide and and run after soccer ball, all that kind of stuff. It has to be done in a the pod setting, which is six maximum of six students. And so they've really been getting after it. Two days in a row has been really exciting just to see the kids out there and exercising and a chance to see their classmates, their teammates, their coaches, et cetera. So I think it's been a healthy move. Obviously, our challenge is just to keep it safe.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from the board for Mr. Lusk? All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to career and technical education director, Rick. There you are.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Mine's a little bit similar to Kevin's. You know, as we know, we have our different student leadership organizations, FBLA, HOSA, FFA, FC, CLA. And their competitions are going to be starting up here this spring, even though they're probably going to be virtually. It'd be nice to allow the kids to come in and work with their advisors to to prepare for those competitions and we could follow follow the same attestations and same protocols that are in place for the athletics and keep it in small groups and and do the social distancing and all of that. So I would hope that that's something the board would consider and allow us to start doing because I agree with Kevin, getting the kids involved in some some aspect of of the school is is very important and and that they'll enjoy it. And then the the other piece I had in my report, I'd like to look at the possibility, even though we're probably going to have to go remote for a while because of current conditions, if we start bringing back small groups of students for special needs or whatever reasons, if we could possibly include the the shop students within that group also. You know, it's 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 very difficult to learn to weld online. So those are those are two things I I would hope would be considered.
Rick, do you have a plan or a how how would we do that? How would we move forward with those two ideas, getting the groups and clubs or competitions together for CT and and back into the shop?
So so the groups and clubs would be exactly the same thing Kevin's doing. It you know, the the advisors would set up their groups, their who they're going to meet with in their times and and follow all the protocols that are already in place for for the athletics. It's it's that's that's universal. The only difference is we would be inside, but they're just going to be working with probably five to ten kids total at any given time versus, you know, a football team or a basketball team of twenty to sixty kids that you need to spread out. So that would be very doable. As far as the classroom setting, we would follow whatever protocols were in place for for bringing small groups of students back, back, back that the rest that the high school has in place. You know, and then as far as the shop classes would have a rotation. Where we had where we.
Or would you like to see more information on that so we could move that forward?
Definitely. I think absolutely. I think that's.
I'd like to see that also.
The Mr. Full, is there a is there a do you have a pulse on what that what your staff of teachers would is wanting to go back? I mean, do we do we have a full? Do we have a full group of of teachers that are willing to to step in and do that?
Um, Kevin, Kevin, excuse me, Brian would have that information. He's had the survey, but my conversations with particularly Stephen Hader in in the in the shop, he he would like to have his students back for shop classes.
Tired of the hard to teach that from from home especially. So yeah, I'm I'm all for it. I think we should get and get the clubs back. Even if we've got they've got to meet outside or or whatever to make life easy. I think I think the kids would grab right a hold of that. So yeah, thank you.
Andy.
Thank you.
The sooner the better, yes.
Hey, Peggy, any comments?
No, I just I would like to see as much as we can bring kids back safely that we we find ways to do that. So I would like more information, but it sounds like a really good idea to me.
Jezlyn.
I agree with what Peggy just said.
Matt, could you help us with that? I know there might be some MOU issues there or bargaining issues with staff that would have to come back for those specific activities. But could you help us kind of guide this with some more information as we move forward, how to make that happen?
Yeah, there I would say that there are exemptions for districts. You know, there are high schools that have already decided to to bring kids back and put them in rooms. It goes against the guidance of Ben Franklin Health District. But doing that at scale, like Rick was mentioning, and say, for instance, a shop where there's big bays and we can open that up and there's proper ventilation in there in small groups. That would likely be the safest. Of course, there, you know, like you had mentioned, there are going to be MOU issues that we need to work through. But we're we're currently working through some of those and, you know, building out these programs where we can. Here that Mr. Lores will talk about the the tutoring as well as Dr. Dean will talk about the special services programs we're building out as well.
There's no better ventilation than any of those shops. And the wood shop, they were all designed for ventilation to keep all the stuff out of there. So I and they've all got shop doors. I mean, if the kids are going to be in welding hoods and and put their coveralls on, I'm sure we they'd much rather be a little chilly than than not there. So I think we can we can certainly accommodate that. And Coach Lusk, I didn't get a chance to get in there on yours, but would you make sure and thank all the coaches and thank you for all the time you spent getting this thing going? I know it wasn't easy, but yeah, I'm sure everybody's glad to be back out there. It was cool to see the pictures of them running around. So.
Thank you, Scott. Rick, we'll work through that and have him help us get some information back to the board on how we can move forward with that and what we would have to do to make it happen.
That's that's great. I think I think we can do it just like Scott said, the shop the shops are big areas of open space. We can open the doors. We've all worked outside and welded outside. So what's what's indoor with a little bit of cool air.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments for Rick from the board? All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to the Trad Nutrition Program, Darlene Morrow.
Good evening. We, how are you doing? Good. We've been working on our free and reduced applications. We sent out a hundred and twenty-one apps of people that still need to have them turned in. We have received quite a few back. We have still about eighty eighty to go. We're going to be making phone calls to those parents because it's really important for them to get their free and reduced applications turned in. We also will be changing in January our grabbing goes. Instead of doing it five days a week, we're going to start following the same schedule as the bus and it would be Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're getting to change it because of the weather conditions. And we'll be sending out flyers. We'll have a robo call and we will also have it on our district webpage to let parents know. We'll be changing that. We have second harvest coming again to Witstrand on Jan or excuse me, December fifteenth. I have them coming on January fifth out to Witstrand again, and they'll be coming to Prosser on the nineteenth and the location is still yet to be decided. You have any questions?
No. Only eight remaining on the free and reduced lunch. That's that's awesome, Darlene. Thank your team for doing that, but getting that number down further and further is really helping the district. So I really appreciate your work on that.
You bet. Thank you.
Darlene, the second harvest is at at nine in the morning. Does that start at nine?
No, it actually starts at ten. It starts at ten and goes to twelve and we'll need volunteers again for those days.
Okay. All right. And that's the fifteenth and then January fifth.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board for Darlene? All right, thank you. Have a good evening, Darlene.
Thanks. You too.
All right, next is the maintenance department, Mr. Shaw.
Good evening. We had should go relatively quickly for me. We we did some PPE work with Eric to help provide some supplies for his tutoring program at both middle school and at Bethel. Same thing with Kevin. We're we're providing for the for the kids coming back, the athletic conditioning classes that we're having. And we provided helped provide a lot of the PPE for that. And then we also had some just kind of logistic problems like you know, what gates are going to be locked and who who goes where, what keys go where. So it's been going real well. We're kind of waiting on more specifics on building layout. I think all the principals have a pretty good idea how they want to lay the buildings out once we get the kids back. And of course, we don't know the percentage of kids that are going to come back. So that's kind of a an issue. And then we're also waiting on our large PPE order that Matt made here several weeks ago. So we've made room for that at the storage shed at the maintenance shop. So we're good to go.
All right. Any questions from the board for Dave? All right, thanks, sir. Have a good evening.
You bet.
Next is our migrant and bilingual program, Mr. Lorettes.
Good evening, everyone. So we've been kind of learning as we go through this whole tutoring process. I'm happy to report this evening's numbers have been averaging around twenty-five to twenty-seven in each location. I'd really like to extend a special thank you to Howells Middle School for allowing us to use that South Gym. And also, I want to extend a special thank you to Terry, who sanitizes and gets everything clean and ready to go for that secondary location. It's really appreciated. It's working out well. And then another shout out to all the teachers for their time that they spend with these students and some of the realizations we've been learning is that the kids have been responding well. I also like to report that since we've been doing tutoring, we have not had any students get sick or have any kind of repercussions from that. We've been following all the guidance and the protocols and they've been working out well, especially with the hand sanitization and as well as keeping kids distant properly. So I'm happy to report that. We still continue to do professional development for the bilingual program. And for migrant students, we're doing everything we can as well as far as helping kids with credit retrieval. Starting to meet more with families and understand how do we create plans to support students and get them where they need to be. Other than that, our work continues and our next steps are to see what the new hybrid model will look like and then how we can support all the students as we move forward.
All right, thank you, Eric. Any questions from the board for Mr. Lorettes? All right, thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, next we'll move on to the special services department, Dr. Dean.
Good evening. So I talked in my report a little bit about preparing our department for hybrid learning. Lot of the things that we have. Lot of the things that we have to deal with are subject to bargaining. So we're going to follow the finalized MOUs and the building protocols for each building. The current offerings we have is we have partnered with Mr. Loretz and we have staff to assist our special ed students at each site. We hired two teachers, but one needed to back out. So we are going to look for another one. So we have certified staff there. We ordered five Pure Air Blue to 11 air purifiers for each life skills room and the preschool room. So we can further make sure that we maintain a healthy environment. Those arrived yesterday and we'll get those out into the buildings. And then I just put on the IEP compliance and the numbers. I do have a number correction on the program. I was using the wrong count for school total count. So what's on there is an error. And we added two students that are not on that count. So what we have is a count of 349. And that gives us a percentage of 13.8 of our students. I put, I have no recommendations at this time. But I am going to, you know, make a plug for please getting our life skills kiddos in and some of our other kids that are just struggling trying to do online. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions or comments from the board for Dr. Dean? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Next is the Technology Department, Sean.
Good evening. We were asked, we were asked for our report to include this week what we were doing to contribute our part to preparing for anything that may or could happen within regards to COVID-19 protocols and what we were doing with those. So I included those in my report this week. Currently, we are setting appointments for tech support to help with social distancing. That's working on a lot of levels. One, it's ensuring that people get the appropriate help that they need with their devices and or software that they're using. It also is ensuring that we don't have people stacked up on top of each other in person in our office. So that's helping. The checkouts are now happening at a building level. Each building has a certain amount of Chromebooks and hotspots that they are allowed to check out to their new or returning students, which has helped too with the social distancing. As far as the protocols for our department with the disinfecting, I worked or I talked with Linda Kirk this last week about what, how best it would be for us to sanitize the Chromebooks and sleeves that are returned. So we now have a process for that as well. As Chromebooks come back, whether they need technical support or whether they're just being checked back in, we now have protocols for disinfecting those. We've talked about the assertions, the communications have gone out to all the buildings now, the fact that that is up and running and staff should be reporting that daily. That's kind of a slow process and kind of a fluid process, partially because a lot of our staff are not on campus. That will be required as soon as they are on campus, but for now, we're just getting them used to taking that assertion every day. We had 50 people turn it or fill it out today, which I thought was a kind of a win. There are roughly 519 staff members that now have the ability to fill out that assertion. I also had the privilege of meeting with our coaches with Kevin and Laura this last week. We did that last week and we talked with the coaches about our expectations for them filling out that assertion as well. And we finished getting that set up. Any questions?
Thank you, Sean. Any questions or comments from the board for technology?
On just a couple, Sean, just a couple of things. How how are we doing on the Chrome and hotspots? Or is there a lot of IT issues with them? You know, during a day, do you get 10 coming back or five coming back or?
No, all in all, I'm all in all, I'm pretty happy with it. I mean, we've had a few accidents with the Chromebooks, but not many, not really. The younger kids tend to be super respectful of their devices. We don't get a whole lot of those back. As far as devices not working, we've had a few come back, but I anticipated that because we started with devices that we had already been using in the schools. And they were reaching their end of life anyway. So we've had a few of those get weeded out. The kids bring them back with with issues and then we just reissue a new Chromebook. So all in all, I'm pretty happy with the way things are going. I don't see an astronomical amount or an amount that I didn't anticipate.
We've got good support from the company because I know there's, everybody's using Chromebooks. It seems like so. And they had to get them out in a hurry. We're getting good support from the company and that kind of stuff. Good.
Yes. Yep.
Great.
All right. Any other questions for Sean? All right. Thank you, Sean. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next report is transportation, Amy.
Hi. Okay. So our buses, our buses and everything are good to go. We've cleaned them. I have the sanitizing wipes in. The drivers are sanitizing the buses as they get in and get out. The hardest part, I guess, has been keeping them out of our small little office so that we can maintain our distance from each other. But other than that, I'm working on a plan for when we go back, how we're going to load KRV students and get the buses to the other schools on time. So it doesn't cause a delay for everybody else. And then working on a plan for the teachers at KRV and finding how to shuttle them into the school since there is no more parking for them.
Any questions for Amy from the board? Thanks, Amy. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. We'll move on to our principal reports. We'll start with Chris Moore. Hey, Chris.
Hi there. How are you guys? I filled out my report for you and so I don't want to read it. I just want to come up with a couple of things that I wanted to respond to. First of all, I sent everyone an email today with the pictures of it. So I sent you all to your email, what it would look like in an elementary classroom in all three of the buildings, more than likely, what the six foot square looks like. So that you have a visual of what it would look like for our students to come back in hybrid model. So if you haven't checked your email, I sent one to each of you on your emails, schooling mills. Second, the one thing that we've been working on now is that of our 362 families that that could have responded to the hybrid question, whether they were coming back or not. We had 213 responses, yes or no, but we had 149 families that did not respond either way. And so we've been calling those families and leaving messages and asking them their preference of whether they say virtual or if they're coming back hybrid model. So that's what we've been working on for the last week since the last time we met. My two recommendations at the bottom were the same as kind of like Amy, there's a lot of safety issues and social distancing things to consider when we also have construction going on. And I personally would like to do some tier stepping, meaning having one grade level or two grade levels come back at a slow start so that we can kind of address the unknown factors that are going to be facing us when we come back hybrid model. So that we're more successful. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board for Chris? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to, we'll move on to Heights. Jody, there you are.
Hey. Well, my report looks very, very similar to Chris's. I, but one of the things that I was going to kind of push for is to have a full staff. You know, we have due to layoffs. So that would be one of the needs that I really want to stress would be the full staff, especially the paras and health assistants and a custodian. We are down one custodian. So just to make sure that we're having the proper, you know, the amount of people to make sure everything's clean. All of our rooms are, we have mapped them out for six by six, every room or six by six square. Every room's been done. And our current offerings right at this point, this week, we are kind of refiguring some of our parish schedules to see if we can add some more afternoon help. But we have not. We're just in that beginning phase of now that the first quarter is done and really kind of reflecting on what has gone well and what has not. And so to try to re-figure some stuff out to see if we can add some more help to those that either cannot get to tutoring or would like to stay online. That's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
Questions for Jody from the board?
Jody, have you guys, I could ask any of you, but have you guys reached out? Or have we reached out to school districts that are actually open in places to see what kind of problems they are having and what kind of problems they aren't having. So we're not recreating the wheel with all of this.
I have. Actually, my brother is a principal at a K4 school over in the Woodlands School District. And so I, him and I have talked quite a bit. I actually have his schedule and we've kind of looked at it. They are I know for his school, the kids go four days a week. They have, and this is again, just Woodlands. I don't know what Prosser, we can do our own, but they're actually having specialists because that was one of the big things, how to do specialists. They're actually having specialists. The kids get done an hour early and then they do specialists at home still online. So I know that for me personally, just I have, and I have some friends that have work in Grandview and in Troy Cities. And we've kind of talked just chit chatting, but my brother and I have really talked more thoroughly. So that's my, my experience. Okay. Anyone else? All right.
All right. Thanks, Jody. We'll move on to Whitstrand Elementary, Mr. Goman.
Good evening. So Scott, can I answer part of that question that you asked Jody? So you know, each school is slightly different based on the MOU that they agree on with the certified staff and the classified staff. But there's a variety of options that are out there to explore based on schedules. But they all look slightly different just based on the MOUs that they agree, agree on. Going back to the survey, we had a small percentage that answered the initial survey and just like Chris's building. We have staff that are working on that. Close to finishing fourth grade and fifth grade is the last group that we have. We should have those finished up in the next couple of days. Right, right now, it's, it's pretty close.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Kevin, do you mean, excuse me, do you mean the response from the parents for fourth and fifth grade? Or what are you referring to?
Yeah. So that initial survey that went out, if they would be willing to do hybrid or stay virtual. And we've made it through, all the way through the third grade, fourth grade, they got about halfway through. So I'm expecting fifth grade, we finished the next couple of days. And right now it's, you know, overall, we're right, we're hovering around 50/50. So with those numbers, but I'll have better numbers after, in the next couple of days. And just knowing those will help us with the staffing. And where I can, I have the surveys that were from the teachers and have a better understanding of how many kids are coming back per grade level. And then I'll be sharing that with Matt and Deanna. You know, once that MOU is decided and what hybrid schedule we decide to go with, the staffing needs for each building. I'm sure that Chris and Jody will also be sharing that information with Deanna and Matt. Current supplies, we're running kind of low with our current supplies of PPE. We, I did an inventory or actually Kurt did our inventory this week. Masks. We're okay with masks. We have 12 bags of masks left, but we're, our alcohol, our sanitizing wipes. We only have four packs left. So we'll be needing some more of those. Our one-on-one support with our, with our paras in the afternoon. So we went through based on I-ready scores and selected several students from every classroom to get one-on-one support in the afternoon with the paras and after two weeks were, or actually throughout the whole building, we're noticing it takes about two weeks for the kids to get into a routine to start showing up on a regular basis. Some of the kids, it was, once the class meeting was over, the camera went off, the teacher went away. So schooling went away. So just contacting those parents and those students and it takes about two weeks before they get into a routine. But now we're getting a pretty good percentage of them showing up.
Anything else, Kevin?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from or comments from the board for Mr. Goman? All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the middle school, Mr. Denny.
Good evening. So a lot of the same answers to the, the first set of questions that you guys had, you know, sent to us. The first one being the, the protocols, including staffing and equipment needs. A little unique at the middle school where we have tutoring three nights a week from 5:30 to seven. That adds, you know, an extra layer of that. So we're, we're down to two custodians and they're usually working from 6:30 till about five. So Terry's picking up that extra work in the morning to sanitize all the tables, put everything away so we can use that area for that entryway for food distribution in the afternoon where it's getting colder. It's difficult for our food service team to be outside. So they're going to use that area in front of the concession stand to stage out of. So that's serving double, double duty. And then as we come back with kids and we're cleaning every room, probably every day, that'll be some extra needs there. So some staffing considerations there. You know, in our office with the health room and looking at the potential needs there. So just some conversations about that that we'll need to have. Like Kevin and Chris and I think Jody have said, we're working on getting the parent responses of the potential plans to come back school. So we can get the number of students. So we can start talking about our plans with the reentry and how we split up students and and keep the numbers in a manageable level. A lot of the same answers, like I said, on, on the rest of them. We've got the attestations up and they'll start sending those reports to the administration and, and school nurses here and we'll be able to check those daily and our staff that are coming into the building will start using that. But we do have out in the front, we have the single entrance to the building and, and everybody's signing in and masking up and gloving up and, and using the wipes and the the hand sanitizer as they come in, there's a station as they come in the building. So we're trying to get all of that ready to move on to the next step as that's, as that's negotiated. Current offerings. We have some, in the first two, let me just say that those are virtual. So small group reading intervention and small math group intervention. In the afternoon, our students start the day at 8:30 online and they finish at noon. And so we come back and our reading and our math interventionists run small groups. Both of those are certified teachers and then we have parent educator support for those in the afternoon to get groups of students, some extra support in reading and math. Let's see, we have teacher intervention and support within their, within their classes during the time that they have students in their synchronous video sessions. They also have opportunity every day to work out or work with students who are reaching out through office hours. We have some students that call every day and come into those and we have some teachers that call out to students and ask them to come in and join us during those, those daily opportunities to do individual and small group support students. As always, we're trying to better communicate with parents and stakeholders as much as we can. So the teacher, school community try to communicate through progress reports, attendance calls. We're sending out a calls for attendance and touching base with parents every day. We have Linda Brownlee, who does an amazing job and she's keeping a list of individual student tech needs. We had a student who moved recently and doesn't have a wifi. So they're going over to their grandparents. So that's a consideration that she's kept track of and then she contacts the teachers and lets them know. So trying to increase our communication through all of our, all of our routes with our parents. Daily, we're having either section 504 IEP or SSD Student Success Team meetings. Daily, we're having either section five oh four IEP or SSD Student Success Team meetings. Which includes staff, parents, students. And so we have quite of those in the morning, a few of those in the afternoon is needed. Through the support of Mr. Larez and the migrant program, we've hired a, a success specialist to come in and. Work with students in the migrant program. I just got the most recent priority for services list. Today, went through there and looked at the number of students that are struggling in there and. I'll be giving that to, that person on Monday and, or tomorrow, excuse me, and we'll be. Contacting parents and reaching out and seeing how we can meet the needs of those students first. And then we'll be moving out to the rest of the. A hundred and fifty students on the, the rest of the list after that and really trying to create another avenue to make contact with parents and, and. And the students and, and support them any way we can. We also have community and schools. They do a fantastic job of providing students and families. Academic attendance and other needs such as food, clothing, whatever family might need to support their. Students in their academic endeavors. And then as we've talked about several times, the after school tutoring Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday has moved to the middle school for secondary. So. That's been a, a, a great part there. The second part, I don't want to have to go through and, and read all these because I know that you guys have had these for a while, but the number of students that either have. These or Fs. It's a, a pretty. You know, pretty big concern, looking at last year's numbers to this year, a significant jump as you may imagine. Of superintendent Reichdahl actually had a press conference yesterday and it's recorded on TVW. Where he talks about a statewide concern with the current model. And the number of students that it's, that it's not supporting and, 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 and that the. The push when possible and as possible to, to move back to in-person, in-person. Education actually gave a story about one of his own children. It sounds like a very bright. Student who has a couple of classes that they're struggling in. So. You can look at ours overall, when we look at the number of students with an F for the building, we're at fifty-two point nine percent. Number of students with the D were at eleven point five percent. And then you can see the breakdown above them there. When we look at the number of. Possible class periods that a student. Has through the course of the each of our six hundred and eighteen students have six class periods. So that equals three thousand seven hundred and eight opportunities for a class, a grade in, in a class. And. With that, we have twenty-eight point one percent of our students have. As of last Tuesday night, an F in one of their classes. You can see the number of Ds is quite a bit smaller with three point four percent. I have some information on it, you know, kind of the prompt was who, who is the, the student that's struggling and. And I would say we've, you know, we've noticed a struggle with all of our, all of our students. We either have a, a large number of students with As or a large number of students with Fs, the Bs and Cs and Ds numbers aren't. In a, in a typical pattern like what we've had before. So. When we look at the number of students that are not in a state or federal program. And of those, the three that I'm primarily looking whenever I calculated that was. The migrant bilingual and special education programs. The students that are not eligible for one of those new programs have a, a rate of forty-one point eight percent of our students have an F. When, or at least one F of their six class periods. When we look at students that are state and federal program eligible and. It's difficult to break that down a little bit more specific and I could give you, I'll, I'll be glad to send you the, the numbers if you'd like for the three. Categories, but many of our students. Are in multiple programs. And so they might be a student who is identified as bilingual and also has a disability. So. As you can tell, those students that were already. You know, in a marginalized category, their F rate is their seventy point two percent. Of those students that have one or more Fs. And so. You know, we saw that, that number has, has always been something we focused on before. And so it's become even, even more noticeable, you know, in the, in the current situation that we have. So. I haven't, I haven't set my timer. So I'm going to hustle through these last few here. So what the root causes of the Ds and Fs, you know, obviously the. When you look at pre-COVID, post-COVID, there's, there's the, the root cause to, to all of it. In that, then the secondary or tertiary are the, the closure of in-person school. Learning opportunities, we moved to a remote learning platform, lack of student connections. So many of our teachers talk about if we could just see them, if we could get them face to face. There's resources that were lost because of this, you know, budget cuts, staffing cuts. So that, you know, plays into it a little bit as well. Not as many people to be able to support the number of students at the, at the percentage that we did before. Loss of learning time, instead of having a fifty-seven minute period, five days a week for each of their six classes. They have two forty-five minute synchronous video opportunities. Up to forty minutes of asynchronous learning, plus there's a thirty-minute period on Friday that we touch in with the students. So. Cut about, cut about half of their time that we had with our students out through the, the model that we're in now. Unfortunately, and so that has a huge impact when we. Have to, to take the curriculum and, and find those priority standards and focus on those. You know, there, there's got to be some, some cuts somewhere along the way. So our students aren't receiving. The full curriculum, but they're receiving those power standards that we know that will be, or the priority standards, excuse me, that will be using to build off of in the, in the. Coming units in the, in the years to follow. Obviously, when we have them in person, if we have a student who's not attending or maybe is tardy several times or has great issues. We're able to pull them into programs, you know, at school. We've got readiness, it's an after school, we got homework club. Twenty-first century, we have study tables on Wednesdays. We don't have those opportunities now. So that, you know, that those opportunities to pull students in during lunch and, and have a conversation with them and. And have them sit there and complete an assignment, you know, we don't have that opportunity there. I talked about the modified curriculum and then I can't say enough how much Sean has done and, and her team to outfit an entire district with. Not only teachers, but our students and support families. Wifi out there for all of our families, but even in that, there's still a, a, a lack of knowledge, maybe. There's still tech difficulties. And there's still issues that come up, you know, day to day. So those, those play a role. Is, is well in it. Attendance is one. That students will, will show up to our synchronous videos on the live video sessions. And they're there, that's where we have the best attendance, over ninety percent. I think we've talked about that before. But a lot of times. They will shut their computers or their, their cameras off and then they're not engaged in the activities. So you see that that goes with low student engagement. We also have students that, that we're calling, you know, and we've sent out. You know, representatives to help us make home visits to, to talk to them about the reasons why they're not coming to class. So. Attendance is a little more, is a little more of an issue now than it was when we were in person. And so those are some of the, the big causes that we have. I know that. When the negotiated agreements were made in August and the plan was approved by the district and, and sent off to the state. We had thoughts and ideas on, on what the issues were going to be. And since then, we've identified several others and, and we've been addressing those. And we have ongoing, constant conversations with our site team. I had conversations with parents today and yesterday and, and several times through the week, trying to help problem solve how we can make this process better. So. How do we improve these student outcomes? I don't think the, the outcomes are, you know, acceptable or, or, or what we had envisioned at all. So. In addition to the things that we've done over the last couple of months, as we've seen some of the struggles that our, our students and our families and our teachers have had. Obviously, moving to hybrid and getting those students in front of us as negotiations allow. The after school tutoring opportunities are, are huge. And again, I thank Eric for working on that. The parent that I talked to today, one of the frustrations were, you know, getting somebody from each content area there to be able to, to support their student. The student had struggles in English Language Arts. And there wasn't somebody from the ELA department to be able to support them. So. You know, when we do get them, you know, face to face or one-on-one, being able to support them in, in the areas that they might have struggles in. Yeah, bringing those at-risk students in as, as it allows and help them with their academics. And, and we've got a lot of students that are at risk and we've talked about those numbers over the years, but. We're seeing those students that are already at risk are really. The, you know, on the struggling end of, of the, the work that we're doing. So anything we can do to support those students would be, would be great. Continue outreach to, to support the social emotional learning. We've got kids that are, are in crisis and so our counselors and our staff are, are working to reach out and really support those students through. Curriculum that we have, but also through our crisis support. We, we thought we had a pretty good idea on what we were doing trimester one. At the end of trimester one, we've, we've talked about, we need to update trimester two. One of the things that we did at the beginning is not everybody had their devices. So we said, you know what, you have till the end of the trimester to get your work done. I'll say the numbers of, of the Ds and Fs, I, I hope are going to. Continue to go down. Over the weekend, there were over two hundred and fifty assignments that were turned in that were late. And so those late assignments went in as a fifty percent. And so. As they complete those and they get credit for those, we're hoping that those grades continue to improve over this last week, but I think some of our, our students and. And, and, you know, it's, it's natural as we went in, well, I have till the end of the trimester to get that done. So we've looked at. Different ways of setting expectations for the amount of time back quickly. The sooner we can get the information back from the students. The sooner we can give them feedback and the teachers can, can develop their lesson plans and parents have a, a, a more up-to-date idea on how their students are doing. So. We've been talking about homework completion, grading, feedback, all those kinds of things. We moved to, to trimester two. The specialist that we have through the migrant program is going to be huge. As I've said, and, and we always try to work on that, but increase communication with parents. I did a survey recently with. With the most recent student-led conferences that we had. And that was probably the number one things when I asked, what could we do better? Was earlier and more often communication with parents and, and we, we did those virtually. And the teacher said that was one of the biggest successes was being able to walk through on the screen with the student. And walk them through that. So I think, you know, the more we can continue to support our, our students, but also our parents, so that they can support the students at home is going to be. Huge for us. Increase the opportunity for small group reading and math intervention as, as opportunities allow. Working through those students through the synchronous videos and, and being able to, to, to provide more support for our students. Throughout the day is going to be good. The office hours, trying to really, I think that's an untapped opportunity for students, a resource that we'd like to increase and, and use more of. Also, the, the progress reports, attendance calls, individual student parent communication, again, really hitting that communication and, and improving that. Things, the student engagement, Kevin kind of talked about that. They're really getting after it at the high school and we're starting to work on it at ours, the athletic offerings as they come available, but. Our clubs, getting our clubs started, getting students engaged. And then we're, we're talking at the coach, the, the district level. More professional development in ways that we can engage students. We have. A high, high number of our students that are coming to synchronous videos. So how do we engage those students at a higher rate? When we do have them and really maximize that time. One of the teachers today said, you know, the, the discussion is about the number of Fs and a, and a reflection back on a teacher. Unfortunately though, that teacher, you know, said there's some students that, that I, they don't ever turn their camera on, they don't engage. So. How do we engage those students? So they actually benefit from the instruction we have. And, and it's not just the student who is, is out there in, in virtual land and, and just another number more so than. An engaged student of our, of our school system. So. Those are some of the, the different ways that we're trying to improve the outcomes for our students. Like I said, when we started the year, I think we had great intentions, but over the last sixty days, we found a lot of areas that need to be. Shored up or, or supported or addressed. And as we worked through the, the next round of MOUs and, and plans. I think that we'll be able to address a lot of the areas where we've. Where we've struggled. Like I said, we've been doing this since, you know, public education since sixteen forty and in sixty days, we've come a long ways and. It's not the outcome that we wanted, but we're really working hard to improve that outcome for our students.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Any questions or comments from the board for Mr. Day?
I appreciate all the, and, and clarifying a lot of that stuff. You do get a D for your time management though, Mr. Denny on, on the one, you went over way over. So.
I, I thought it was going to fail. So I appreciate the grace you gave me there, Scott.
You bet. Yeah. D plus, D plus for effort. So, hey, also. Is there just no way that we can require these kids to turn, keep their cameras on? There's, I mean, and not being incomplete or not, is that, I. I should know that because I, I, I've read the, the directives, but I, I can't remember what it said on there. So.
That, you know, that's a, that's kind of a double-edged sword. One, I think there's a privacy issue, so we, we can't require it there, but. Sometimes that, you know, that student, there is that one student in the twenty-five that's. Up dancing or whatever. So it's a, it's a fine balancing act of, of who is on screen and how much time are they taking up? So. It's, it's been a difficult one. Obviously, I think, you know, whenever I sent out to the teachers, the, the survey and said, you know, what's one thing that we could do to, to, to make this better? Almost all of them said, you know, something like, give me the students. And so. It, you know, it takes that whole component out of there, but I know that we're under, you know, a, you know, significant regulations and, and all that. So. Trying to do the best we can with, with where we're at.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Any other questions from the board for Mr. Denny? All right. Thanks, sir. Peggy, are, are you with us? I saw that it was flashing on and off a little bit. Sean, if you have a chance, could you? Peggy, are you back? Sean, could you reach out to Peggy and see if you could help get her back on? I think we keep losing her.
She texted Scott and said she was having technical difficulties, but I see everybody's. Internet is slow in some areas and some areas aren't. So I'm. An issue.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to the high school now. Mr. Bailey.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing all right. How are you guys? I had daughter sitting here, so hopefully that'll be, I had her, she was the cute factor and she left me. So. Just to answer your question from earlier, Scott, we have seventeen teachers that wanted to stay virtual, twenty-three. Wanted to return to a hybrid situation and four that were still undecided. And we're undecided based on, on plans. And when those plans were solidified, they would have a better idea of what they wanted to do. But those are the preliminary numbers. Those may have changed even since that survey went out. It's been a little while. So we'll have to find that. I'll get updated numbers here shortly. I just wanted to say, we're. You know, you have the, you have the list of preparing the build, building and departments for hybrid learning. It's not much different. You guys would, would know all that. Our custodial staff is working really hard to try and implement hybrid. Situations in classroom environments. They begin moving desks and, and trying to. Find out what our minimum capacity is, or I guess our maximum capacity based on social distancing at the high school. We have a slightly different situation that obviously we're having people. Potentially move from classroom to classroom depending on, again, what model is chosen, but it looks like we can get fifteen, fifteen or sixteen kids in a classroom safely. And we can, we've mapped their fifteen and sixteen kids. Makes it a little bit difficult to meet the needs of our students, the number of students that we have at the high school. So we would have to be creative in, in meeting those needs. Now that's if everybody wanted to come back. So. As we get those updated numbers like the elementaries and, and the middle school has said that, you know, those, that'll be updated and we'll have a better idea of what. What we're actually looking at as far as the number of kids that, that are coming back. But I just wanted to thank Ginny Klein and Freddie Magagna for all the work they're doing in the building and keeping us safe and trying to keep it all clean. And in addition to that, someone that doesn't get a lot of recognition perhaps is Allison Bestabur. And the nursing staff for the district, she's taking care of us, does all the contact tracing if, if we have had any problems. So. She's done an amazing job as well. Current offerings, much like the middle school that. That we have, we have a number of support classes led by parent educators in the EL and bilingual programs. We have support groups from the teachers within class. We have support groups. From the teachers that are being led after class, outside of hours, during office hours. And additional study sessions that are happening even in, in the evenings in some cases. And so it's been good to see that. It's been good to see the kids that are showing up. I wish more kids would show up to that. No, it's very helpful for the kids that do. We started a program for shout-outs from our admin team to students and the teachers will recommend students that have been doing well. And we've created videos and started sending those out to students. I think that that has been well received. In the community and by the kids. I, I had a couple of personal emails sent back to thanking me. And I know David has had the same thanking us for that. And this is actually something that was suggested by Casey Blair. So she's given us the opportunity to build those relationships. But it really is all about. Seeing people face to face and seeing, you know, they're, they're happy to see us presenting them with something. And, and I, I just want to. To echo the sentiments that have been shared already from, from my colleagues in that I believe that. And that I believe that kids just want to be back in person. Kids want to, to have that, uh, that face to face contact. You know, we spend nine to 11 years training our students how to work within an environment inside a building. And now we've completely flipped that and it's, it's challenging for kids and teachers. But, uh, that time, those time management skills aren't quite there. The bulk of my information that I wanted to talk about was that grading information. May have been a little confusing. I'm glad Michael touched on it. Coordinate our efforts in talking about our grades. The first part that I wanted to share was, uh, you know, the number of grades by, um, by section. And so I did that. If all of our kids were present at the high school, we would have 4,415 sections of grade. Not all of our kids have a full schedule at the high school. So that number is reduced a little bit, but if you break it down, you can see the numbers there by section. 26% of our students, 26.3% of our students are failing a section. Or we have failed 26.3 of our sections. Uh, that number sounds a little better than when we break it down by student. By student, we, it, and it changes weekly. We get weekly reports at two, 2:00 AM in the morning, every Monday, uh, we get a new report. So the numbers have changed slightly, um, but you can see I put in two different, summary, pre-conference summary and the post-conference summary. And I only broke it down that way because we've had many discussions. We've had a number of opportunities to try and, and work as a staff, work with our students individually. And try to bring that, the number of failures and, and D, the D and F rate down as much as possible. And, uh, we felt like it wasn't really coming down as much as we wanted to, as quickly as we wanted it to. And so I made the decision to, uh, after discussing it with the staff, I made the decision to change the grading procedure. And give everybody the baseline of 50%. So many of you, if you've had high school students, you, uh, perhaps would have seen that video that I created during conferences. Uh, in our attempt to balance the grading scale and make every grade worth equal percentage. And that, that reduced our, our failure rate. The DNF list pre-conference between 70 and 75%. Uh, really the average is about 70%. And, um, post-conference, that number dropped to, the number of Fs dropped to 42%. Actually, it's, I got that wrong. Uh, the percentage of students with Fs only as of this Monday was 43.9%. Uh, that's, that number's still really high. We don't like to see that. 43.9% of our students are failing at least one class. Uh, but that's down from the 53.5 that it was pre-conference. That's the number of Fs only. Pre-conference, again, 53.5, now our current reality, 43.9. So they've dropped 10%. Uh, we were hoping that there'd be a little bit more, um, success due to the change in grades. But, uh, one of my teachers actually today, uh, provided me with some data that he was collecting in class. And it created another piece of data that I found interesting. The progress report one, information that he had on the turn in rate, the number of percentage of kids turning in assignments. And progress report number one was 69.6%. So roughly 70% of our kids were turning in work. Once I made the decision to change and what I thought was going to help them by giving them an opportunity to get that grade up quicker. Number dropped overall, this is for his, all of his classes together, but the number dropped from 69.6 to 50.4. So we saw a drop by 10, roughly 10% in the number of kids that are failing, but an increase in the number of kids that are no longer turning in assignments. Uh, and so, uh, a lot of discussion taking place at the high school within our, uh, within our groups. And our staff meeting about what that means and what, what changes we know, you know, what does that mean for us according to the data? What do we need to do, uh, to, to better the environment for these kids? And I really, to me, it means bringing kids back. Again, we've been, we, we've been teaching these kids how to succeed in a, in an environment within the walls of the school. And, uh, and they were fairly successful at it. You know, we, last year we had a freshman fail, or a freshman on track to graduate. I know that was one of the questions that you guys had. Freshman on track to graduate in 1920 was, uh, in 2019, 20 year was 68%. Right now, so far, if nothing else changes, we are only at 52%. So our goal, um, on the school improvement plan, uh, you know, it's a longer range plan now, but it was, the hope is to get to 85% by 2025. So we took a hit and we're, we stepped back and now we're going to have to rebuild that. And I believe that the only way that we're really going to make these strides is to start bringing kids back in person. These numbers are low across the, across the state, across the region, across the state and across the country. Uh, the numbers of, of success, the success numbers are lower than they have been. So, uh, we want to, we want to broaden the, the tutoring. I would love to bring small groups back to the school like, like Rick has talked about. I think it's going to help with Kevin's work with athletics and activities. Um, it's given kids more hope. It's given kids more of an opportunity to have that social emotional need met. And I, I believe that that's only going to increase the, the productivity of our kids. Uh, we'd like to offer more in-person classes if we can, um, and, and bolster the, uh, activities in addition to the athletics. Um, and I, I believe that those things will help. But the other thing that we talked about today was, uh, revisiting our attendance policy. You've heard that quite a bit today. Our attendance numbers are high based on what the state is requiring. But, uh, if only 50% of our students are turning in work, then that would suggest that they're not engaged. Um, and so to maybe relook what, you know, within the laws and within the recommendations from OSPI, what can we do with attendance? To maybe bolster that, that engagement. And that's, that's all I had for you today. Unless you guys have more questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from the board for Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, Brian. F, F on the cute factor, C on time management there. So, um, anyway, thanks for all your, your efforts and I know it hasn't been easy. So we'll. Keep, keep trucking.
That's all we can do. Thank you, guys.
Hey, Brian, I had a question, um, and then maybe you can help me answer it or not. When, like, I, I kind of watched Scotty's, um, canvas. And I see as we're getting closer here to the end of the trimester, there's a, a ton of, so how can we help support our teachers? That are having to deal with the huge amount of assignments that are being sent in like right now at the end of the trimester. They've got a few days left and need to get it turned in by Sunday. There are a ton of assignments coming in for those teachers.
There are a lot of.
And that's great. I mean, I'm glad to see that you're doing it.
Right. We, so are we. We're happy that those assignments are coming in. But, uh, you know, we've had much discussion, uh, both at the middle school and high school level about how to, uh, to help our teachers in the, in that regard. Number one, we've talked about reducing the number of assignments in the second trimester. And, you know, focusing on priority, you heard Michael refer to that. If we truly follow the priority, uh, standards that are available on OSPI, then really we're talking anywhere from a quarter of the standards to one third of the standards. Um, and that now reflects on the survey that, you know, that we, we talked about a couple of weeks ago. Parents are concerned about their kids not being, uh, at the level that they need to be. And if we truly focus on those priority standards, then I feel we're, we're moving down that. Yeah, they might have a deeper understanding of what those priority standards are, but we're also leaving behind a number of, of other standards that would normally be taught. So there's that balance that we need to find. So number one is, is finding the balance of assignments. Number two, uh, Michael, Crystal, myself and David Funk have been working on trying to, I, we just presented this to the staff. Trying to come up with ways and one of the suggestions, uh, to, for this problem in particular was to put a limit on when assignments can be turned in. Right now we have to the end of the trimester, possibly giving them a two week window. Uh, from the, from the time that that assignment is dropped, only two weeks that they're available to turn that in, unless arranged otherwise with the teacher. Uh, and so that might be an option. Some of the thought behind that is that students can rise to the occasion and will rise to the occasion. If they are met with constraints. We have some feedback from a number of students directly to individual teachers, uh, that suggests that they have been waiting, knowing that the further we get and the more that, that teachers are stressed and administrators are stressed and the district itself is stressed that we will make accommodations for them. And, uh, that has been communicated to our parents on, or to our teachers on an individual level. I do believe that, that, uh, our students need structure. And so if they have those timelines in place, um, whether they're at the end of the trimester or earlier on, if they're at the end of the trimester, they're going to turn in the work close to the end of the trimester. If we put those restrictions and timetables on them earlier, then they're going to turn, I hope, just to see them turn in that work earlier. So we are working on that and we are working together as a secondary group with, between the middle school and the high school.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brian from the board? All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are our student rep reports. Um, let's start with Emma.
Um, Emma actually won't, she won't be here tonight. She got called into work last minute.
Okay. Well, we'll go on to you then, Kate.
Okay. Well, thanks for what you said, Mr. Bailey. I think that was, um, you did a really good job at, um, echoing a lot of the students' feelings and thoughts. So I thought that was super, super good. I appreciated that. Um, just, I don't have a lot to share. Right now with the student body, we're trying to, we're always trying to get student involvement, um, during times like this. So we are trying to focus more on the holidays, trying to get some holiday spirit going. We, we discovered that the more effort that we require of the students, the less participation we get. So, um, as far as virtual activities, we're trying to do fewer and get more bang for our buck. Um, that's just kind of a strategy we're trying out. We'll see if it works. As far as, um, the tutoring and the in-person workouts. From my perspective, um, that's been a really good thing to see something, some kind of progression. Because as Mr. Billy said, we've spent how many years now, um, learning and growing in a, in a together environment? So, so something like that is, has been really, really beneficial. And then just as far as like ASB, we've started doing some like social media trainings. So that we can better our social media outreach. And I think that's something that's super good in this situation, but also just in general, because it's something that's here to stay. And so utilizing it to the best of our ability. So we have, um, social media pages for every class. And, um, those are gaining a lot of traction and popularity. And so that's been a super big asset to us. But, um, that's really all I have. I don't have much else. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kate. Jennifer. Hi Jennifer, how are you?
Hi. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the clubs. Currently, uh, many clubs are really, um, trying to have activities for students. The Karra, um, is like a spirit to the club and for that club, we're trying to, um, have more activities. It's kind of a little bit difficult since, um, sports are early starting, but, uh, yeah, so, but one thing we are trying to do is, um, trying to have positivity quotes. So people can, because not a lot of people are feeling like inspired or like motivated in school. So we're trying to have like some positive, something positive, so people can feel a little bit motivated or something. So, um, other clubs, um, we're trying to do, um, I'm not really, um, involved in other clubs, but, well, I am, but at CCLA and Mustang Tribe. So for at CCLA, um, we're trying to do a co-trip, but we're not, um, really sure right now, uh, how to do it. We have to get, um, we have to get, we have to get, um, that like, um, cause we're also trying to do with the ASB and, um, and leadership, so we can do it with the Mary Mustang for the Mary Mustang Week. So, yeah. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your input. All right. We'll move on to board reports. Jess.
Uh, I just want to share that I appreciate all the work that goes into all the reports that we hear from everybody. And it was beneficial. Thank you, Deidre, for getting the packet to us a little bit sooner. Give us more time to read through all of that before tonight. I did get some questions from community members who saw some of the athletics happening last night. Not necessarily positive because they want their kids in school. So, um, it was elementary parents that I heard from that, um, are anxious to get their kids back in classrooms. So that's, um, the feedback that I've heard. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jess. Andy.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody too. I, I do realize it's a ton of work to, to put all these reports together. And, and what Jess says, I got hit a couple of times today too, asking why the lights were on and the kids weren't back in class. So it may be a little hard to explain, but I think they'll be used to it.
Peggy, are you with us?
I am. I'm back again. I'm going to echo what, uh, Andy and Jess have said. I, I do appreciate all the director reports and all the, the building principal reports. It, it's been a crazy year, but it's one way for us to all to stay connected on what we're doing to, to, uh, move education forward. So I do appreciate it. Uh, and then the only other thing that I've got going on is, uh, I've been working with PETA and with, um, and with Rick from the CTE program on the, we're planning to do the Mustang Business Plan Competition again this year. And, uh, we've, Pete has been doing that for probably five years. Last year, COVID hit right before competition, but we're, we're, our plans are it'll be a virtual presentation. And we're shooting for March 4th for that and looking at different ways we can, um, include the, uh, the community into viewing those competitions. So March 4th is the date for us and I'm pretty excited that we're going to be able to offer that again for kids.
Awesome. Thank you, Peggy.
Yep.
Scott.
Thanks, Scotty. Um, I'll probably go over my time limit on this one too. I'm a, gonna be kind of long-winded tonight on some stuff, which isn't unusual. You guys ought to be used to it by now. But, um, first thing I'd like to do is, is, um, I'm sending out a recognition there for Jim White. Jim passed away, um, longtime school teacher, statistician. Vast knowledge of many things and, uh, my kids loved when he subbed. In his later years, because I could get him talking about some sports stuff and he was just, just a huge, huge knowledge guy on sports and, and anything really that, that was, um, history related. So, um, I know we refer to him in football as all timers and I, I think Jim White was an all-timer in my opinion for, for Prosser School District. He was, uh, super instrumental in my sister's education. Uh, she had him and, um, had a real critical time in her life. And, um, and I was honored to be an honorary Paul Bear at his funeral. And I just, uh, um, he was one of the great ones. So anyway, I just, uh, wanted to throw that out there. I did, I also too listened to Chris Reichdell's, um, press conference and I was very moved actually by what he had to say. I think he, um, swallowed a lot of pride there on some things that he felt like we're going to work. And he clearly is saying it's not working. We're not, what we're doing is not anybody's fault. It was, it's part of the process, but it is, um, it's not working for all the kids and, or for a majority of the kids. And we've got to get these kids back in class. And I, I firmly believe Matt's doing, uh, and all of the administrators. You know, we talked, uh, early on when we started doing this distance learning and I, one of my comments was the cream will rise to the top like it always does. The, the teachers that really put the effort in and the administrators that put the effort in. It shows and, and the teachers and administrators that don't, it, it also shows up. So, um, I'm very appreciative to, to everybody that's been working very hard. It's, it's, uh, not been easy for any, anybody, but I truly believe the hybrid learning, um, needs to get modified quickly. We need to get something going. We need to get kids back in class, whether that means we got teachers that are not able to teach. They have a computer screen. We've got kids in the class. We, we've got distance. We've got pairs in there to keep the civile- We, we've got distance. We've got pairs in there to keep the civility going. Teachers that can be in person, get in there. That want to be in there. And, and, and I understand there's, there's teachers that can't get in there. They, for their health reasons or whatever reason that may be. And that's, that's perfectly fine, but we've gotta, we've gotta change some things. We've gotta get going on this deal. I appreciate the parents groups that have, have contacted me. I know Matt had a fairly lengthy and tough meeting with some of them. And, and it gets personal and I understand that their educate, their kids' education is personal, but I just want to caution people that, that they're, people are professionals. We're all trying to do our job. The people that are, are voted in, we're trying to do our job. And, and please try to keep that in mind when you get personal about things, because it's, it's personal for all of us. And I just, getting personal doesn't, doesn't help things. So I reiterate, I, you know, we're policymakers and Matt is personnel and his staff, our personnel, and, and we try to stay in our lane, but I'm probably going to get outside my lane a little bit here. Teachers that want to get back in the classroom, you need to make it very, very clear to your leadership that that's what needs to happen. And, and we, we respect the, the folks that can't and we'll try to figure out the best way we can do it, but got to have teachers in the classroom in order to teach the kids and we got to get the kids back in class. That's all there is to it. There, there's no real getting around it. I appreciate all the efforts for everybody, getting everybody in the sports. It was great to see the pictures. I truly understand where Jesslyn's coming from. That's what we had mentioned a few weeks ago in our meeting when I was, was here was, we got to get the young kids back in school. The older kids, we want them in school as well, but they're able to do some classroom and, and some, some stuff or some sports and, and some of the clubs and that different thing and, and social media is big for them. The younger kids, we, we just got to get them back in face to face and get, get going on that. So anyway, I know I'm not, I'm telling you guys all things that you already know, but I just, I just wanted to reemphasize that, that we're working awful hard. I know Matt's losing hair over this whole thing. So we'll just, we'll keep, keep battling and then please keep your comments coming. And again, I just caution you, try not to get personal about it. We're, we're all in this together. We're all trying to work at it together. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Our next item is superintendent's report. Mr. Ellis.
Okay. So for my report tonight, I kind of want to speak globally and then get granular on a couple, couple of subjects around COVID and then we'll move on and talk about stuff that's not really COVID related, but it's business of the district. And so first I kind of want to start with, we updated communication on our webpage around kind of some of the factors that will influence decisions. Of course, Governor Inslee came out with some guidance about not visiting your family's household during holiday seasons. Of course, the Benton Franklin Health District came out with recommendations to pause on bringing back secondary students. And just today, you know, the, the Wall Street Journal had a great article about a record number of hospitalizations over a hundred thousand and health experts are anticipating that because of the holiday season that they'll see even an increased surge. So we're, we, we as a district are starting to bring kids back in different ways. And a lot of districts around us are, are even deciding to pull back in spite of this. I believe that we can progress safely in some areas and, and we'll continue to try and progress safely. Part of that has been, you know, building out the programs that, that we've established. Around athletics, you know, part of our early conversation with that was, in leading the way with athletics, there was going to be a political component based on that and that we were likely going to hear about that, that why are you bringing back kids to participate athletically when you haven't opened schools completely? And we knew that and we knew that kids would be practicing in pods and we felt like we could do that safely. The tutoring and adding supports, we also felt like we could do that safely and build it out. Currently, we're working on transitioning those programs back into buildings and having places and locations within buildings to bring those kids back. Cindy D, or Dr. Dean, Cindy Dean is working on special services, moving from teletherapy to more of an in-person therapy model. I am continuing to work with the, our labor partners, our labor unions on developing language. With that being said, we've had more people come to the table. The PSE, I met with them on Monday and they want to develop further language about returning. Our Principals Association has contacted me about developing an MOU. And I've met with the PEA today and we'll meet with them again this week around developing more language. The, the talks with the PEA have been going extremely well. We've made quite a bit of progress. We're looking at a two-day, two-day on, three-day off type of model. Once we get that solidified, we're going to publish that to parents and really try and garner numbers around how many students will be, we will need to schedule and how many teachers will need to schedule for those weeks. We want to give our parents enough time that they can talk to their employers, find childcare. We know that running a two-day, two-day on, three-day off schedule may not be convenient for, for many of our parents in, in trying to strategize around that. So we're continuing to move forward on that is Dave Shell talked about, we're distributing PPE. We're making sure that we have those out to the building. Chris Moore sent you pictures today about how we're beginning, you know, we've, we've taped off classrooms and we're creating those six by six spaces for our students to, to be in when they're on campus. So with that being said, there, there are still a lot of details to continue to work through. We, Sean and Kevin Lusk have been kind of piloting the attestations and having kids do their attestations. We've been doing that at the employee level as well and trying to get employees accustomed to that. So I'll be continuing to work with our teachers on that language. So hopefully we'll get some, get some language nailed down. We'll be able to work with parents. Right now, it, it looks like we're going to have to bump, bump the anticipated day for a couple more days beyond trimesters for administrative functions. So we know where, what kids are going to what classes, the bus routes to be run, who's, who's picking up who on what day? And allow our parents some time to flex. So that's kind of where we're at with COVID. We're pushing, we're pushing and opening up. Like I said, many districts around us are shutting down at the same time we're opening. We're trying to be, you know, use precaution and caution and do it, do it right. I do believe that there's a light at the end of this tunnel and even though we're seeing cases soar, there's, there's news of vaccines and countries approving vaccines. And so I do think that we're close to the end of this and that now, having gone through the journey that we went through, that it would be, it would be a shame to, you know, open up with haste and have, have a lot of things go bad. And so we're continuing to work towards that. Any questions about the, the COVID information, the information that I've been communicating with you? Benton Franklin Health District. Anything that we're working on as far as that goes?
Thank you, Matt. Go ahead.
Yeah. So I'll be continuing to keep the board apprised of kind of dates if those shift. We'll be putting information on the website, communicating with parents, letting them know where we're at in the process. And we'll go from there. Non-COVID things that we've been working on. We've been working on salary negotiations. We've had two units. One of them is our Building Secretaries Unit, which that's, that's on the agenda for approval tonight. I'm working with Central Office Administrators on some, some negotiations as well. So Keen River View continues to build, to build. They've been doing geotechnical surveys on that facility. Our teachers are in it, but as Chris had identified, or I, I think it was Chris or Darlene who, who had said, you know, there's one entrance and that will be for teachers, that will be for the kitchen, that will be for everything. A lot of the other entrances are, are closed and it's been noisy over there. So it, it is a learning environment. You know, I, I don't, I don't know that it's the optimal learning environment, but we, we can start to bring kids back there once we solidify things. PETA, I was able to meet with Neil Riplinger and Jesslyn about some broadband connectivity within our community in ways that now will kind of be a prime time to gauge that in ways that we can provide high-speed internet access to our citizens and grants that they're out for. I had a superintendent's meeting today and this is kind of an aside. I know that Craig had the year-end report. At the beginning of this year, when the board approved the budget, there were some questions about how, how load those reserves, those cash reserves we're going to dip. And so right now, we're probably going to need to start working around projections. And looking, looking at this fall, basically in, in terms of trying to gauge if we'll need to reduce, reduce in force and at what level. So those, those conversations are very intentional. You know, it's a conversation that we would need to be transparent about. That we need to pull the community on board about, that we'll have with all of the labor units and everybody will have to cut in some way. But it just kind of as an awareness component to the board, those are conversations that are had in December and January. Not necessarily in March and April. And so we'll probably need to start talking about that in, in working, working through that. At least, you know, keep that in the back of your mind. So, yeah. Glenn is on the, on the call tonight. I think I spoke with the board about this at an earlier meeting. Our safety and security officers have been doing just a great job on developing our protocols and procedures for emergency situations. One of the things that Glenn has done is that we had some vandalism take place at the new PHS. And so our safety and security guards have been scheduling time at the new PHS, not only to tour it, but make sure that none of that vandalism takes place during the evening. So that's been, that's been a great piece. And when we get back, we're able to meet in this Open Public Meetings Act, when they, when they lift that, we'll need to schedule a special board meeting around safety and security. And I've been really, really pleased with the work that that team has done. Other than that, it's a not really business as usual, but I know that everybody's doing their best.
Thank you, Matt. Many questions or comments from the board members for Mr. Ellis? Thank you, Matt. We're going to move on to the next item real quick, but something clicked in my head and I wanted to ask it. When Brian gave his report on the high school, he said 15 to 16 students in a classroom is what they had laid out. Chris and Jody and Kevin and Michael, is that about the same at your schools that, that you're seeing? When you lay out a classroom of how many students you can get in?
At our school, we could probably put in more, but right now it's set up for about 12 because no classroom's above 24.
I, height does not have, they're not all the same size of classrooms. So it really depends on the classroom. Portables are a little smaller. The old wing and then we've got some new wings. I'm going to say 12, 12 maybe. Yeah, 12. And when, we're going to have to remove the teachers' desks a lot and which will, to get more kids in, which will also require their document cameras and the technology to, and the wires to be moved, which is going to be difficult, could be. So, but I would say 12 to maybe 14 is what we're seeing.
Thank you. Michael, what are you seeing at your school?
We got big rooms at the middle school, bigger than the elementary. So some of our classes can have up to 15. Some of our classes though, like a couple of our science classrooms that have table sets. We'd either have to move those out and those are big, heavy, bulky tables that are meant for scientific experimentation, or there'd be limited numbers of students in some of our classes. So down to 10 to 12 in our smaller sizes.
And Mr. Goodman, are you still on here?
Yeah, our interior are quite large. So we're probably around 15 and then the portable's around 12.
It really limits the number of kids we can get back into a room safely too. Okay. All right. Thank you for that input. I appreciate it.
Hey, hey Scotty. Scotty, a number of years back, we had a, a number of years back, I don't remember what the name of the wing is at the middle school. They had the, the fire suppression system burst and got everything wet. And we set up sort of a portable wall system in the gym and they put like, I want to say like six or eight classrooms in there. Is there any reason we can't do something very similar to that at all the buildings?
Mr. Larez, are you still on here? Or maybe you can help us, Michael. How is that working for tutoring at the, for the secondary at your school?
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Did you hear Andy's question?
Yeah, I heard Andy's question. Actually, that was my first year with the district when that happened. So it was pretty interesting. So currently, how we have the south gym set up are we, we're currently using the lunch tables. And it's allowing us to keep kids six feet apart. So there's three per table. If we were to go back to that same kind of layout that we had when we had the sprinkler incident, I believe we had four classrooms in there. And we did have some walls. One of the challenges though, when we do that is that there's quite a bit of noise level that was a concern. And we had to kind of address that, became kind of a distraction. However, I would say a possible solution to that would be if we were doing some of that work, it might be some of that asynchronous time within those sections. So kids are doing more of a learning on their own with some additional support. So it's not necessarily loud and there's active teaching, but we can rotate in classes to do some of those things, but entirely up to, you know, Mr. Denny's schedule and how that would play out. But it is a possibility to use individual desks in there. And then I guess the other concern would be flooring. We spend a lot of money resurfacing those floors. So we'd have to be, try to be precautious about those things.
Andy. So
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. So one of the, one of the challenges with that learning environment is like it was identified, number one, it's noisy. Two, the partitions can be upwards, you know, of a thousand dollars, $2,000. Three, there isn't really charging or enough electrical outlets. And so teachers don't really have station, you know, they can't really operate technology in the way that you would with a PowerPoint, a computer, a station as they typically do. Since we're using six-foot separations and taping those out, the tape, you know, if you use masking tape, it wouldn't be too hard to probably peel off the floors. And you wouldn't have to worry about fire capacity. That would be if you're using a gym normally and, and trying to, trying to pack them and stack them. But it, it just tends to be very, very noisy. The, one of the challenges I think is we transitioned to a hybrid model is in, it's what parents are going to ask is, how's it different? Is it just online learning, but you're providing a place for my kid to go? Or is there actually going to be real instruction involved? So that's one of the details that we're working through. Is there actually going to be live instruction taking place? Or is it just somebody looking after a kid or watching over a kid in, in a classroom? So we're working, we're working through that. You know, Dave Shell had mentioned a meeting back about like maybe bumping kids into hallway space. You kind of, you know, one of the discussions you get into is, um, quality, right? Quality of educational experience. Um, so.
Well, I mean, I, I realize it's, it's not ideal and it's, it's kind of more, or at least last time it was an emergency, uh, situation. Well, this kind of is too, but I'm just thinking that, you know, if you could get your classroom size down to the fifteen or dozen or whatever it is they fit, the overflow could, you know, bump them into open spaces that we have here. There, you know, wrestling room or whatever, but just somewhere where we could set up desks and have another class.
I agree a hundred percent, Andy. What, what's going on right now is not working and we've got, you know, we got kids turning their computers off, shutting their cameras off and, and, uh, it's going to be a heck of a lot better to have them in a loud environment with somebody that can keep their eyes on them and talk to them and visit with them. And, I mean, I, I think it's the best of, of the lesser of two evils, in my opinion. So I, I agree a hundred percent. Whatever space we can use and we have, you know, the PE kids are going to have to make sure that we got them dressed so that they can go outside and do, do outside events. If the weather's so bad that we can't do it, then we'll adjust from there. My, I just, I think that's a great idea. So.
Yeah. I mean, any, any teachers that are, you know, willing to come back, we jump on it, put them, you know, give them whatever space we have. And I don't know, it just seems to me the sooner the better.
Okay. Let's move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda. The only change that was made was to, uh, as I made, made earlier, was to take off the one teacher on the certificated personnel list for IB7A. Um, other than that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Andy and second by Jesslyn to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item is the, our only action item. It's to approve the accounts payable warrants, that Mr. Reynolds provided for us. Need a motion to approve those, please.
Move to approve the vouchers.
I will second it.
Motion by Jesslyn and second by Andy to approve the, um, accounts payable warrants as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. That does it for agenda. Our next meeting will be on the sixteenth of December, um, most likely on Zoom. I, I doubt that the governor's going to change that, um, in the next couple of weeks. So, um, we'll probably be back here on Zoom. Um, at that meeting, we'll discuss the school improvement plans that we, uh, received today. And we're also going to review, uh, the year-end, uh, financials that Mr. Reynolds provided to us earlier tonight. So aside from that, that's all the business we have. Unless there's other discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Andy, Scott, all right. Y'all have a good night. Thanks for coming. Appreciate y'all's time and all the parents and teachers that showed up. Thank you.
Night.
Well, good night, guys.